Let them get situated first.
All right, let's go ahead and get started on the Tuolton City Council work session for February 10th, 2020. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, Boy Scouts. We just had a quick meeting inside the room. They're up for their citizen merit badges. So they just, we chatted. They had terrific questions from me, how the city is running, our finances, how we're going to solve the transportation crisis. They had great questions, and especially volunteer opportunities for them, and how they can make the city better. But thanks, guys and ladies, for coming.
Yes, they're Scouts.
Yes, they are. So, the first thing up tonight is Labor Negotiations Education Session.
I've got our HR Director, Stacy Ruth Raff.
Welcome, Stacy.
Who will give you a good briefing.
No.
Now it should be on. Okay. So hopefully, I will run through this quick discussion of our Public Employee Collective Bargaining Process. We are about to enter into negotiations with AFSMI. They have a contract that's expiring June 30th of this year, and so it was requested that I come and do a quick presentation for you all with regards to the bargaining process. So, the first and foremost, what is the collective bargaining process and why do we engage? The crux of this answer is really to create a set of rules that help us to govern our employees, also known as the CBA, or the Collective Bargaining Agreement, will help govern how we facilitate employment rules, hours of work, overtime, things of that nature with our employees. And there is a legal response to this as well, which is PAKPA, which is the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act, and that allows the employees to form, join, and participate in labor unions, and create a standard of rules on how employee contracts are established and maintained. So, a snapshot of the city of Tuolton. We have two collective bargaining units. The first is TPOA, which we just bargained last year. There are 31 employees within that. And, as I mentioned, AFSMI is our other. It has 95 employees within it, and AFSMI stands for American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees. You may also hear this referred to as TEA. It was previously its own entity, and then was encompassed within AFSMI as a larger unit. And then, we also have our unrepresented employees, which is the remainder of our staff. That equals about 30 to 40 employees. Our philosophy on bargaining. First and foremost, we approach bargaining with the mindset that employees are our biggest asset and our biggest resource. And this helps us to create solutions towards respect and problem solving, and we also set our expectations based on what the collective bargaining agreement says. So, it gives employees the idea of culture, how we value the work, how they're compensated, and expectations in the workplace. We have a multi-year relationship with AFSMI and TPOA. It's always been extremely respectful and transparent. This ultimately leads to a wonderful working relationship with our unions, which is really advantageous in terms of going into the negotiation process. Our supervisors do a really excellent job at making sure that they abide by the terms of the contract, again, establishing that trust and further building relationships with our union employees. As always, we work towards the delicate balance between being fiscally responsible, but also getting our employees what they need and into those bargaining contracts. So, we continue to head that direction in all of our negotiations to make sure that we are meeting both the needs of the city and our union employees. As far as timelines, I think I previously mentioned that our current contract with AFSMI expires on June 30th. We received our demand to bargain in December of this last year, and on January 30th, we conducted an interest-based session with AFSMI to talk about interests of both the city and of the union. Luckily, they're pretty aligned, so it should lead for some really good discussions. We will, when I wrote this slide, unfortunately, I had a quick update. I expected that we'd begin mid-February. I was correct. We have a date set that we will begin on February 20th with our first bargaining session. That will kick off the 150 days that's required by PAKPA for bargaining, for it to begin. And after the 150 days, and I can get into that in a little bit more with timelines, but we have to bargain for at least 150 days before you can move towards impasse. During those 150 days, it's expected that we both participate in good faith, and bargaining in good faith means that we're meeting regularly, that we're truly attempting to reach an agreement, that we hear and understand proposals, and respond appropriately to each of those proposals from either side, that we don't bypass our chief negotiator at any point, that there's no side bargaining happening, and also that we don't undermine the process. One thing that good faith does not equal is concessions or agreeing to unnecessary demands. We do have the right to bargain as we need to, to get to that final agreement, but it doesn't mean that we need to concede to everything that they request during the process. And likewise, they don't have to accept everything that we request as well. I had previously mentioned that one of the things of bargaining in good faith is meeting regularly at designated times. So, throughout the course, we will meet regularly. I believe we've currently discussed that we would try and meet every other week. Our initial meeting on the 20th will set a moratorium date in part of setting our ground rules for how we will participate with each other. Moratorium is the last date in which any new article can be opened during the bargaining process. Typically, happens about the fourth or fifth session of bargaining, in that you get through generally the easier items to start, and then you start getting into, towards the third, fourth, fifth sessions, you start heading into the financial items. And, but after that point, no new article can be opened. So, if an article is opened, you do need to reach a tentative agreement on it to reach a final tentative agreement of the entire contract. If an article is not opened, it just remains status quo. So, the language would carry over to the next successor agreement. If the two teams are unable to reach agreement, that would mean that the contract has gone to impasse, or you've reached impasse. There are several options that you can take. The first is mediation. The second is a fact-finding. And the third, if you are a strike-prohibited unit like TPOA, they're strike-prohibited because they are law enforcement, would be interest arbitration. However, with the case of AFSMI, they are not a strike-prohibited union, so they would, at that point, be permitted to strike. Hopefully, then, we don't have to go down that road. And if the tentative agreement is reached by both sides, then it would be ratified by both the union and the city, and then we would end up with a successor agreement. If, for some reason, either the voting does not pan out with the union, or we didn't have something happen in council and reach a ratification, we'd go back to the table until we reached a new tentative agreement, and then start the process of ratification again. Once that process does happen, and we have reached a successor agreement, we are both, both sides agree to abide by the terms of the agreement until the final date of the next contract expiration. As far as City Council, what does this mean for you? It means that you will meet an executive session with myself, and/or we have a chief negotiator that we've used from, his name is Dan Rowan. We used him for the last AFSMI negotiations. And we will come and give you updates, and we will look to you for fiduciary guidance. We will also come to you and ask, where do we draw the line if we are experiencing problems? We will, whoops, excuse me, work with you to find out what service levels that we are looking at with our managers. Our managers will work together, looking to find if there's any impediments that are happening towards reaching agreement. And again, you all hold the final ratification authority for carrying out the contract. A quick note on ULPs. What is a ULP? There are, there's a long laundry list of ULPs that can happen. The biggest that you really need to be aware of are interference, or dominating or interfering with the formation of, or the existence and administration of a employee organization, or essentially, the refusal to bargain. Those are kind of the most typical that you will experience, and we want to avoid them at all costs. We do not want to go down the ULP path. And, so why should you be concerned? I mentioned those interference. That's usually the most typical that will happen. If there is an end run at the end of, sounds just like what it is, an end run, where we are getting into the final nitty-gritty of the contract, it is sometimes that the union will come and want to address council, totally fine. They may also want to address you individually, and that's where things can get a little scary. I do ask that if you do have those conversations, that you just make sure that you keep us abreast of your discussion, and what was, what happened during those discussions, to make sure that we stay in alignment, and that something hasn't been promised that we then see as a takeaway or a regressive bargaining within the process. So, it's just an open communication to make sure that we are on the same page and keeping information clear. Also, what can happen is that direct dealing on that same token, where it will lead to the ULP. So, what's next? We will be starting again on February 20th. HR and Finance will be here to seek guidance from you, to talk about the process, to get that financial direction after we get a little bit further into bargaining, and hopefully, great things are to come. Any questions?
Questions for Stacy? Robert?
Sure. A couple of slides back, you'd mentioned there was a meeting in January. I forget what it was called, interests?
Yes, our interest-based discussion.
Okay. Can you disclose the contents of that meeting?
Can I talk about interest-based, because it was an open discussion, or does that need to be done in exec session, John?
I would probably recommend it be done in exec session.
Right. That was my inclination, but I just wanted to make sure.
Understood. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And I had this, I believe it was a couple of years ago when we were doing this, and I never got around to asking it, so I'm going to ask it this time around. What defines an article?
Typically, it's the content that's within it. So, there'll be a specific heading, whether it's the preamble, or hours of work, or financial information.
It's not a typical, there's not a typical book that says, these are the articles of our employment. It's just whatever it happens to be?
I would say there's a standard.
A standard, okay.
That's followed with most collective bargaining agreements, but each collective bargaining agreement will be.
Be different.
Yeah, exactly. It'll be based on what was bargained with, between the two parties.
And then, what is the, and I know we had this conversation, and again, I don't remember the answer. What's the minimum, or what's the maximum number of years you can, we can sign a contract with the union for?
It's really up to our own discretion. I've seen contracts as small as one year, and some contracts.
But what does Tuolton typically do?
We typically aim for a three-year contract.
A three-year, okay.
We're all looking, the Boy Scouts are looking, and we're looking at it. What the heck is that?
I was trying to figure out what the joke was on three years. I just didn't get that.
That's all I have.
All right. Other questions? So, Bridgette?
So, if we get to a point where we have union people contacting us directly, should we just be very clear that we're not speaking on behalf of anybody?
Yeah, that's, I mean, a safe approach would be to definitely not delve into the specifics of the contract. They may ask you questions such as, you know, like, what can we do to move this process along? And just knowing that we're in good communication with you, and trying to move those forward. We generally, when we see that there is sort of that stall that'll happen, they may actually tell us, we have such a good relationship, that they'll come to us and just generally say to us, hey, we're going to go to council. And it's like, this happened the last time, and we just said, let us go chat with them in exec session and see what'll happen, before having them come and do a presentation here. So, that's kind of what to expect there.
Robert? Okay. Who's representing? Ask me. Is it an attorney, or is it a union member?
It's one of their union stewards. His name is Seth Moore.
Has he represented him in the past?
He did the last contract as well, yeah.
Any questions? All right. Thanks, Stacy.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda is a review of Tuolton's marijuana regulations. And is that Steve in Aquila?
It is us.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Do you want me to pass? Yeah. Hello, good evening. So, we're here to, I guess, kind of help answer questions and facilitate your discussion from last time. So, we were here on January 27th, and you guys had a good discussion around the boundaries. What Steve's passing out right now are some large format maps of different options that we're also going to present on the screen. So, we didn't print one out for everybody because of the size, so you'll have to share with your neighbor. So, our plan tonight was basically to walk through these maps and let you, the council, have your discussion.
Great, great.
So, we'll start with that.
Sure. And so, just to follow up on what Nicole was saying, the maps being presented on the projector are also in the same order as they are in the sort of folio maps before you. So, the first map you have is what we started out with in the discussion last time, the state mandated buffers. And then, it basically goes through 3,000-foot, which is our current standard in Tuolton. And then, it shows the 2,000 and 1,000-foot option. And then, finally, is a newly created map based on some of the feedback we heard at the last council meeting that has the 1,000-foot buffer from parks, schools, and the library, but has no buffer from the residential areas. Rather, it's just prohibited in those areas. Yeah, and I can go through them. I was just giving folks a moment to get oriented. If everyone's ready, I can just walk through them again.
So, we're gonna, we will walk through all of, we will walk through all three of them. So, so that, yeah, let's just start with the state mandate.
Sure. So, the state-mandated buffers, again, the first page in your map booklet there is, so it's 1,000 feet from schools, and the schools are identified on those maps. And then, it prohibits marijuana facilities in residential zones. So, that gives you an idea based on the zoning districts of what, where and what locations marijuana facilities could be allowed.
I'm going to interject just a little bit. So, just to kind of orient everyone, including the audience, of what you're looking at. So, all of this stuff in yellow on the screen is residential of some format. It's, we just put all residential in one color, so it doesn't show any densities. Pink is generally commercial. There are three different commercial districts up there. Central Commercial, General Commercial, actually, there's four, Medical, and then recreational commercial. And then, all of the kind of variations of blue are industrial zones. So, that's why you see the red hash marks over everything that's in yellow, because that's part of the state mandate. And then, in places, you'll see the red hash marks over some of the other zones. So, for instance, in the middle of town, you'll see Mitch School, Mitch Charter School. That's an industrial zone. That's showing the 1,000-foot boundary around it. And then, we, can you mouse over the library, that kind of, that star there, just to, so that, just for orientation purposes, that star is the library, if that's helpful for everybody, just to know where you are on the map. And also, one of the changes that was made to the map was we took off the yellow bold lines that were showing where it was allowed, because it kind of obscured some of the surrounding area. So, it, our hope was that it would make that more clear of, where there's not hash marks is where it's allowed, under the state-mandated buffer, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so if you're all ready, we'll move to the next one. Okay, so this, I'm sorry. So, the slide that we're showing now, it has a yellow banner that says marijuana facilities, citing standards, 3,000-foot buffer. This is what's currently in our ordinance today. So, what you see that's available is this area without the red hash marks on the west side of town in our industrial districts. That's based on 3,000 feet from residential districts, library, parks, and schools. Okay, we'll keep moving then.
Any questions before we move on?
We're just trying to, like, find the major road here, to make sure that we're.
Okay. The 3,000 map should have a yellow buffer header on top.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah, if everyone's oriented, we should try to bring our discussion back. Okay, all right, we're going to move to the, to the next one. Okay, so this is 2,000, it's 2,000 feet from our same buffers that are in our existing ordinance today. And I'm not going to spend too much time on that one. It opens up a little bit more area in the industrial area. This is 1,000 feet, and this includes 1,000 feet from residential districts. So, you see, you've got most of the industrial area on the west side. And then, you've also got the northern, east, northern area where Bridgeport and east of I-5 is now not buffered, if you will. Okay, so, and then, what's this one? Okay, so this is one of the alternatives that we heard at the last council meeting. So, this is buffering 1,000 feet from schools, parks, library. It does not buffer 1,000 feet from residential zones. It has, it follows a hard line of a residential zone, and it's specifically excluding the downtown core, which we took a guess at. So, it's basically I-5 West. So, in this one, you see there's almost, almost all of the industrial area on the west. That northern area where Bridgeport and east of I-5 is stretching down to kind of where Bay Club is, and then, on the east side of I-5, that pink is Nyberg Woods. And those are the alternatives.
So, when we took the yellow lines away, I think, isn't the zone identified as industrial, basically where Leavitton is, that's off limits, right? Under today's ordinance?
Correct, yeah.
Also, general commercial's off limits today, under our current ordinance. It's just light manufacturing, general manufacturing, and manufacturing business park?
Yes.
Okay. So, this map isn't necessarily representative of what, it's just 1,000-foot buffers.
Right.
From schools, parks, libraries. Doesn't include the zone exclusion that we currently have.
Yeah. So, all of the maps that we showed are just representative of buffers. Well, what I'm saying is, we didn't put another layer on to say where they're allowed in today's ordinance.
Right. You have the red hashes over general commercial.
Right.
Right, or industrial.
Right. Ready for questions?
Yes. Those are all the maps, now that you've thoroughly been confused by maps.
All right, questions? As we're absorbing this in.
I'll say something. I just thank you very much for bringing these maps, because it was hard to tell what areas we were talking about without streets. And so, to be able to look at these close up is really helpful. So, even though it looks a little clumsy up here, it works. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add a special kudos to our GAS team, Tom Scott and Martin Loring. Great and super responsive on this project.
Other questions?
To go back, oh, I'm sorry. To go back to what Counsel Kellogg asked, on the 1,000-foot buffer, the, I guess it's the last two slides, and then, post-council meeting, alternative one, of the unread-scored areas that remain, which portions of those, or are any portions of those on the left-hand side that are represented in the blues? side that are represented in the blues?
Mm-hmm.
Do any of those zone exclude the marijuana facilities?
Today, yes, today. Yeah, so it's, no, I don't think you have to change them up. So it's basically this manufacturing park.
Is excluded.
Right, okay. And, and, yeah, so the, these two. The other one that shows up, this is actually, well, it's supposed to be green, but so it's.
It is green.
Yeah, okay, it is green.
A real green versus a weird green.
Right.
So that is medical, and all the pink to the east of the library that is unhatched isn't allowed, it's excluded today. Will you point out up there on the map?
Yeah, so this, yeah. So this portion is not allowed today.
And up to the left, right, no, down, right there.
Yeah.
It's a hospital.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I think they're just trying to show us the difference.
Go ahead, Paul.
What is in this, the pink is to the east right there. Isn't that the hospital?
Yeah.
That's what I was just saying, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just figure it out.
Yeah, that is the hospital.
Okay.
I should've just said the hospital, and then it would all be clear.
So they could become a retail outlet if we change the buffers and the areas of commercial that could have, because right now it's limited to just industrial and.
Right.
Manufacturing and, I don't know what ML is.
Light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing, light.
Not, it's a little like.
So, but under this alternate one, I'm sorry. So under alternate one, though, it would be in the area directly up at the Little Moose's Horns, it would be allowed then in there where McEwen and Lower Boonsford, so right across the street from Safeway is the area that that blue represents, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Robert?
All right, I'll start with an easy one. I've received more public comment on this subject than on any other since I've been on council, and I've endeavored to answer every email that's been sent to me on it. One of the things that I mentioned in my email to people is that there are facilities other than dispensaries, wholesale facilities, producer facilities, none of which have a public-facing component, they're not open to the public, they don't have signage out in front that announces what their presence is. So our current ordinance prohibits those facilities, except in the small piece that we're all familiar with at this point. For those facilities to be located in a light manufacturing, general manufacturing, or manufacturing business park, it's an allowed use. Is that accurate today?
Yeah.
Okay. So but for the buffers we have in place, those businesses, you know, could be in our industrial area, they could be employing people at living wage jobs, paying taxes, et cetera. There's also, in the ordinance, one thing we haven't talked about, which is a 3,000-square-foot limit on any facility. And from people that I've talked to anecdotally, a 3,000-square-foot or less processing facility, wholesaling facility, is not economically feasible. So I would ask, just as a first step, that we look at allowing the use outright in all of the light manufacturing, general manufacturing, and manufacturing business parks with the buffers that exist today, absent the from 1,000-square-feet residential. You can tell the difference between the two maps, 1,000-foot buffer and alternate one. It opens up 25, 30% more of the industrial district while still respecting the distance from schools and parks and libraries. I think that is a reasonable change to our ordinance today. It does not implicate the universal concern that I've received in emails of exposure marijuana products to the public, or deviation from best practices is one of the things that I've received in an email. So I would submit that as a starting point for us to consider. Secondarily, looking at general commercial with whatever buffers and however the council wants to navigate that. But as a first step, just simply acknowledging that industrial uses do not implicate the concerns that have been announced and would provide good jobs in this city.
May I ask you a question?
Please.
Just to make sure that I'm understanding. Oh, I'm so sorry. Contortionist. So what you're suggesting then is that in the blue areas that would be represented on the far left-hand side, you're suggesting that sort of wide-open area would be appropriate for a processing facility or a growing operation?
Yeah, so there's two.
But not any type of retail? Retail would still be confined to the area?
I think, quite frankly, and people in the industry can help me understand, but no one's gonna locate a dispensary out there, simply because there's not enough traffic off of the main streets. So I think the only facilities that would locate out there would be processors, wholesalers, that type of business.
But you're not suggesting making the alteration to call that out specifically?
No, and our ordinance doesn't distinguish between marijuana facilities, types of them, they're all grouped into one called a marijuana facility. So in order to, you know, allow certain functions but not other functions would mean adding definitions and some other things. I'm not saying that's impossible, I'm just saying it's an additional amendment.
Paul?
I just, I'm not sure I understood what you said, Counsel Kellogg, that no one's gonna drive to where? To the current industrial area off of 124th? The problem I have with that statement is Stickman's Brewery, they could, they could literally be located next to Stickman's Brewery. Stickman's Brewery is located in an industrial area at the request of the city to allow them to go into an area that wasn't previously allowed for that type of retail outlet. It is his busiest store. He does more volume there than anyplace else. The Twalton High School just had a brew fest there last week, their third annual brew fest. It's standing room only there. There is no issue with driving out there. The people I've talked to regarding real estate, the basic reason no one's located right now is because nobody's interested in opening a new store right now. There is a glut of marijuana on the market, there is a glut of stores, and they are not interested right now, nobody, except apparently for Western Oregon Dispensary, is interested in expanding. Because meanwhile, that area is within minutes of 99. It is within minutes of Wilsonville because of the 124 bypass. And it is an area that, quite frankly, I would imagine quite soon, from what I understand, we're gonna get another brewery in that area, because of its desire to, for a lot of different reasons. So, and I, and I go back to the original agreement back in 2016, that we, the groups, nobody could agree on anything until everybody agreed that if it was down in that area, it was an area that it would support one, and it would be away from the visibility of what the biggest concern is, at least the way I read the 23, I think, or 24 emails that council received in opposition to changing the buffer zones, was all about limiting access and limiting visibility. And that's a proven, right now, it's, it's basically a fact that if you limit visibility, that you limit use among youth. And that is the one core that I believe most of these emails, at least the ones that I received and read, have been concerned about. And that was a concern from years ago because of, we did not want a gateway. It took us forever to get rid of the entryway to Nyberg Road, and they didn't want to replace it with something else. That, yes, it is a legal outlet. Yes, it is a retail that's legal for adults. We did not want an adult-type outlet on Interstate 5 to the entrance to the city, and that was the concern.
Bridgette?
I, I guess my question is, with considering, what do we call this one? Alternative one? And the original 1,000-foot buffer that we talked about is that there's been so much concern by residents about marijuana facilities, and to have the buffer around residential, for me, is, there's, it seems like a lot of space for other facilities that would still be left. So I, I don't know enough about, I mean, we really haven't talked about grow facilities too much in our discussions. I don't know exactly my concerns yet. Some of the things that come to mind are just, there have been issues with, I would just want, you know, there's insurance and safety and some things like that. And so even with grow facilities, I don't mind seeing this 1,000-foot, or these buffers around residential. And anyway, that's my feedback so far. As far as expanding size, if it was agreed upon that that was an industry that we were gonna support, I think that the size thing, reducing the limits of the size of the grow facility, so that there could be operations, that makes sense, if that's, but I, I, I've been so focused on the, the retail, because that's pretty much what we've been talking about so far, except for just one very small comment at the last meeting, so, so I have to think about that a little bit more. Thanks.
Other comments?
So just one interesting aspect of our ordinance that we haven't talked about is that with respect to the smell, so grow facility, whatever, it cannot extend beyond the property line. They're required to have negative pressure and all these other things. So I also wanna sort of delve in a little bit more into how people are gonna be exposed to marijuana. Say, for example, there's a dispensary in the central commercial area, which none of us on this dais support, but let's just play the exercise for a moment. There are rules about how these businesses can advertise. It can't be Cheech and Chong on the front of it, or, you know, anything. So the most comments I've heard about is the Green Cross, right? And what does that mean? And how do we have a discussion with our kids about when they see one of those? And the Green Cross, from the research I've done, originally came from the medical marijuana movement, treats marijuana as medicine, and so the cross, hospital symbol, it all matches up. Now, it's been appropriated by the recreational market simply because of the, you know, readily knowledgeable symbol, so that people associate that with marijuana. But as far as advertising and signage on front of buildings, I mean, I just, I don't understand how one in the general commercial area out on 99W is going to push people towards marijuana when it says, you know, Cola Cove, if you've seen the one in Tiger, or Chalice, it's a, you know, it's a glass on the front of the building. It doesn't say, "Come here to get your weed," or anything like that. So, you know, I understand the concern about the central commercial area, and I stand behind it. I don't think anybody wants it in there. Now, the industrial piece, I've said my part on, really to me, that the discussion that we need to have is about the general commercial areas. And when you read the description of the general commercial zone in our development code, it is open to all sorts of allowed businesses. It doesn't say that they need to be morally straight, or that they need to be prurient. It just simply says, "Open to the vast scope of available businesses in our town." And so if we are gonna determine that we're not gonna have marijuana facilities in general commercial, then we need to have a reason for doing that. Today, it's not allowed use, that's fine, but if we're not going to continue to allow it, I think we need to explain why.
Got you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate that very much. I'm not interested or in favor of changing the way that we have the areas in blue currently designated. I think that that is an interesting growing area of the city, and I think that an enterprising business going in there could probably do well. As Counsel Morrison noted, there is a lot of development going in out there. There's access to 124th, which can quickly get you to 99 or down south. And I think anyone who thinks that these type of businesses are probably dependent on, like, drive-by traffic is probably being a bit naive. I'm sure if something like this goes in, as I'm sure it will at some point, we're a small city, there's not gonna be anybody in the city of Twalton that will not know where the marijuana store is, or when it opens. So I don't think they'll, they're kind of a destination purchase, rather than an impulse, "I was driving by and thought I'd pop by," kind of a purchase. So I don't think there'll be any problem with a business being found if they're continued to be allowed in the area that we currently have them. Plus, there's a plethora of online apps you can put on your phone for every type of marijuana store that you would wanna find, that uses the GPS on your phone to tell you the closest and the nearest type of facility, depending on what you want. So I'm very comfortable keeping them where they are currently zoned out there. And a question, though, that I do have, that I'd be interested to hear the feedback from the other counselors, is looking at a different area altogether that is still general commercial, I believe, if I have my pinks correct, that would be up off of north of the city proper, up across from Bridgeport in the McEwen Road area, something up there. That would, in my opinion, and again, this is simply my opinion, but that would get us, north of the city gets us out of majority of the city traffic. It's not by any of the major schools or routes for the majority of the schools. In and along there, there's quite a little retail strip of fast-food restaurants. Stars Cabaret is located somewhat in that area. And I'm wondering, if we were to keep the blue industrial areas zoned as they currently are, would anyone up here be interested in looking to possibly add a little area up there as an open spot for plotting something like this, or zoning something like this?
Which pink is that one? The McEwen Road area?
Yes.
It's the blue, McEwen Road area.
It's general.
It's a blue, okay.
It's where the.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So I'm not sure.
If I can interrupt you, is that where the U-Haul and the fire station is, and then points south, or is that?
Yes. That, that blue area is where the fire station and U-Haul is. And then, if you, if you're kind of continuing around McEwen, that's where it changes from industrial to commercial.
Okay.
So like the Motel Sixes, the 24-Hour Fitness, Nikolai's, all of that.
The Stars.
Interrupting you, yes. What's the pink little finger that comes down between the words "Lower" and "McEwen"?
What business is that?
Yeah, what's right there? And why is that little carve-out, I mean, why is that carve-out?
Why is it carved out? I have no idea. It's, I don't know exactly, oh.
That may be one of them.
Is it Nikolai?
I think it's the gas station.
No, I don't think that's the gas, I think that's where, I'm sorry, I got really close to the mic. That's where that Legacy Medical Offices are. The, the gas stations are.
Further north.
I'm pointing at the screen. I'm sorry. Point to the screen.
The gas station's on the corner, and it's solidly, I can see where the corner is, I can kind of see that roadway.
So he's got an aerial view of that little finger. I think that's where Legacy has some medical offices.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm kind of with Bridgette on the 1,000-foot with residential buffer, just because, well, there's a piece over here off, looks like it's off 65th, that I wouldn't necessarily want included, but I'm not seeing where, if we go to the other 1,000-foot buffer, we're still keeping that fairly far away. And to Robert's point, like, the businesses that would probably. that would probably locate in industrial, like, I know in Camby, they have a place that they just make oils and you wouldn't know it's there. It's a manufacturing facility. It's clean. It's jobs, you know? So there are places like that. You wouldn't know they're there any more than any other industrial business there. So I don't think they would, like, they're not retail. They're not open to the public. So they could just be industries located within there. So it's, you know, I thought it was a good point you made about that that could be more industry for our city. And I liked your idea with the thousand-foot that, you know, it would include this area up here where, let's be honest, we don't have the most reputable businesses in that little strip. So, you know, it's hopefully somewhere we're not having our children go currently.
I did have another thought to Robert's point about signage. I know that people bring up one or two examples of what some of the shops can look like. We've talked about the Chalice, and we've talked about a facility with, like, the Green Cross. But I would invite the council to come to Portland with me sometime. I'll take you on a, I work in the middle of the Green Mile, and I would be happy to kind of drive you guys up and down through the Green Mile and sort of take a look at all the different retail facilities that are sighted there, the way they look, what they're called, the way the signage is, the giant billboards on Northeast Sandy that talk about the pricing specials and all the different strains that are in and what you can buy for how much money and to kind of get a feel for, you know, a retail establishment that's meeting the city of Portland's guidelines for signage and so forth, but what it really, truly looks like and what it really feels like when you see the different varieties. Because for every, you know, Chalice that you might have that is more discreet, you've got something on the other side that isn't. And I think we need to be kind of realistically looking at that area and what it could conceivably look like.
Where are we at now for signage? What's the current?
I'm just curious with the current signage, since there is area, are areas, is there, are there, is there an ordinance that we're?
We have a very strict sign ordinance.
Okay. So have we been talking about this, changing the sign ordinance? Okay. All right. Well, I I'm with you. I don't see why we would change the sign ordinance exactly.
Right. I'm just trying to.
Yeah. And I think we've all been to Portland. So, I mean, I get it.
Not everything is very neat and clean and discreet. And so I, if we're going to say yes and say yes, then we have to kind of think.
Keep a boundary, yeah.
Well, and the devil's advocate, and maybe that's a bad choice of words, but the idea that, you know, for every Chalice, there's going to be something equally an opposite that's much more pushing the boundaries and pushing the envelope of what people might be expecting to see.
And that makes sense to me, too, because even just currently with the rest of whatever kind of businesses, we don't have a lot of flashing lights in our city or a lot of, you know, it seems like we have ordinances to cover some of that or we would have that. So that's why, I guess, I asked my question. And it's a good point. Even with other businesses that could be, you know, flashing or things like that, they're not doing that because probably because we have an ordinance. So I'm with you on that. I think that people are, you know, we live in a suburb, and the suburbs, part of what the suburbs are about is they, you know, it's interesting because I go back into real estate appraising. When you look at, like, areas, there's cohesiveness in areas. And what the market will tolerate in one area, like in a city, won't necessarily tolerate in the suburbs. And that just goes with all kinds of of standards. So, I mean, it seems like there's something that we're comfortable with because we're certainly not short on bars and we're not short on, we're not short on a lot of things like this. So, but it doesn't feel like you're driving through, you know, Vegas or something like that, just because we have a lot of bars. And so, yeah.
Thanks. I do think you make a really good point, though, about community standards because I think that that's something, especially when we've been talking about community input and the letters that we've received and the testimony we've received, I think that that's probably the most outstanding, underscored, bold comment is for the people that live in Twolton, what they see their community look like, what they feel that community standards are here. And, you know, my takeaway from that is that people feel like the standards are higher here and the bar is higher here. And so I'm, you know, trying to be very mindful of that and trying to figure out if we can come to some sort of a compromise between perhaps the area that we have today and then possibly looking at opening up another area that might suit a retailer just as well, but might be more fortunately seeded for the majority of our community. So that's sort of what I'm suggesting is maybe we look at some sort of a compromise.
Were you hearing?
Yeah, I believe we have great signage ordinance. I've learned that. I honestly, I actually like the alternative. I think that it's a fair, the alternative map, I think it's fair. I think it's, it covers the protection that a lot of our concerns, the concerns are out there. I think that if we have, if we create, like, outline of exactly what we want as far as visibility, exposure, and we talk about exposure, I can tell you, TV and every YouTube, everything, things that come out out there to our, to our children, it is up to us to be protecting them as parents or as siblings like me. I have a ton of siblings, nieces and nephews. So I think, I think the, as long as we keep, keep it clean, keep it nice, I like the, the alternative map. I agree with it. I think it keeps it away from, you know, areas that are going to be more visited by families. But I actually have, I have a harder problem with, my, my biggest thing is more liquor than it is marijuana dispensaries. I, I have an issue with them more because I have seen the damage alcohol can do to people. And so I've had friends, I've lost friends because of that, young friends. So for me, I have a higher problem with them than something that can control we, I don't know. And we just accept it, like, it's okay, you know? And for me, I feel like we're being a little bit, here we have this, or we're trying to be hard on, you know, this, this industry, but then we accept other industries. And, and it's okay. We see it on TV. The commercials are there. And, I don't know, I don't want to sound hypercritical just because this has been labeled as a drug and the other one has not been labeled as a drug. I've personally have, I've had many problems in my community that's, that's more alcoholic. I mean, there's alcoholic issues out there more than in my community. And I speak for the Hispanic, Latino community than I've heard about marijuana in my community. So that's my, that's what I'm saying.
I, too, also am very, I'm supportive of me, the alternative one. I think it gets us, where it does meet the community standards, and it's not going to be in downtown, it's not going to be near schools, it's not going to be in libraries, and it's not going to be anywhere near where kids congregate. Yes, it will be in the, our industrial area and our outer edges, but as Paul mentioned, it's not going to be in public view that you see every day when you're driving to someone to school or to, through downtown. The question I want to follow up with Nancy is, correct me if I'm wrong, I probably am, when a facility opens, don't we have architectural review for facilities or something like this? They wouldn't go through ARB? But we have design standards, don't we, that the stores have to comply with?
I think not if it was in an existing building. So in other words, if it was a tenant moving into an existing building, I mean, and then, of course, you would have signage, but, I mean, you'd also potentially have, if they moved into an existing tenant, they might inherit whatever, I mean, they might be grandfathered into whatever signage was on the building already. If it's a new, brand-new use where they're building a building, which has seemed to not be the pattern for most marijuana retail uses, that they're primarily tenant-based, so it's kind of different between, between those factors, I guess.
So, so go with Paul's example. Say, out in that area where Stickman is on Herman, that someone wanted to put something in one of the slots that's available back in one in the industrial area, basically the facade that's already built would stay the same, but they had to comply with the rules of that building and with our signage ordinance, correct?
Yeah. And I would just add that, particularly in that example, the industrial area where they're going into, say, like, a newer tilt-up industrial building, the sign ordinance is pretty strict in that, in the application in those areas. I think the commercial areas, particularly where things have signage that's grandfathered from before the sign ordinance was quite as strict, is kind of a different.
Like the Verizon sign?
Right, exactly. Precisely. That's.
Near I-5.
Great example. Yeah. So it's a little apples oranges, but.
Right. But we have pretty, I know we have really strict standard in our signs because I've heard about it, and it's done on purpose. And as far as things looking nice and not getting out of hand like they do on Sandy and stuff like that, I'm thinking the landlords in some of these tilt-ups wouldn't allow that kind of look in their facility, especially considering who owns these buildings. We all know who owns the bigger facilities. I don't foresee them allowing a nasty-looking store opening up in their complex. So wait, where were we at time-wise? So I want to get temperature. It looks like we got a couple things out there floating, is the buffer question and then the question of changing some of the zoning. And, yeah, well, yeah, we have the, if we'll, alternative one versus the buffer question we have is one question. Do we want to change the buffer? And two, if we do want to change the buffer, or if we don't change the buffer, I don't see how it would apply, is changing the allowable zones for marijuana. Am I right? Those are the two things?
Couple others, but we can start.
Okay. So let's go with the buffer one first. It seems to be the easiest one. It seems I heard three or four folks okay with alternative one or?
Can I make?
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I know, we're talking this to death. I'm sorry. I don't, my problem with alternate one is not with the enlarged area in our industrial section west of town. My problem with alternate one is the two little areas along Interstate 5, below McEwen Road, and then the other, you're carving out another little piece that looks like it's about, and it's, again, from this map, it's really difficult to tell, but it looks like it's about right next to the Bay Club or the restaurant that's right down there. And again, I'm not sure if, because you're limiting, because you're eliminating the residential area, you are opening that up, I would be, what I'd call alternative two, and it looks like, and just looking at that map, if we extended the residential to just 500 feet, then that area by I-5, which seems to be a real hot button for a lot of people, would be eliminated.
That's what this is.
And that would leave the larger area in the industrial section along Twolton Sherwood Road, Avery, 124th, and the Lew Ogden Bridge, formerly known as the Mysloney Bridge, leave that area open, which, and again, and beside, and it's not just one brewery. Ancestry Brewery is down there, Industry Restaurant, there's a pub down there whose name escapes me, although I've been there, next to Industry. So again, it's just, you know, I don't think, I don't think there would be a general concern if you widen that area up a little more. Again, I go back to originally, when I was involved in this process at the public hearings, prior to being on council, it was, this was the only way to ensure, you know, no access along I-5. That was the, the one big killer that I remember was nothing along I-5. And so that, and we never had to worry about something along I-5 because Lake Oswego doesn't allow it and Wilsonville doesn't allow it. And so in keeping with that theme, and so, and I don't know what the ramifications would be of that, although, because even if you changed, if you, if you eliminated manufacturing light, you'd get rid of most of that area along I-5, but you're still, you still have the one little corner. But again, it's right next to residential section. So if you expanded that minimally from residential, you would then accomplish, I believe, the exact same goals that what I'm hearing everybody's in agreement on, without opening up, you know, a hornet's nest in a very small area that seems to be a concern for a lot of Twolton residents.
So correct me if, again, I might be wrong, alternative one, the red hash includes, it's a thousand-foot buffer from residential areas, correct? Or is it just?
No.
No, okay.
That's the original one.
That's the original one, which wipes out. I don't know. Is this one?
The other map, the green one, yeah. Thousand-foot for residential. Okay, I got you. I got you.
Before you do, can I?
Yeah, sure.
I know.
All right, Nancy?
So I have a thought on this whole project before we start polling councilors and trying to get a majority or a minority, or however we look at this, into re-changing some of these restrictions. I think if we're talking about making any changes that are significant, which, I mean, essentially tripling the size, allowable size for marijuana businesses to cite as, I think, a thousand-foot buffer and alternative one would do, I mean, that just about triples or even quadruples viable areas, I think we need to kind of stop and think about the process that we're going through. When we first put these buffers and these rules in place, we had a ton of community outreach. We talked to the citizen involvement organizations. We talked to the business groups. I mean, we talked to a lot of people and got a lot of input before we put these in place to begin with. And I really think that if we sort of just arbitrarily start changing these guidelines without going through the same community involvement process, I think that we're really sort of stepping on and disrespecting the community involvement that went into this in the first place. So although we obviously have an interest in, you know, readdressing these questions in these areas, I think that before we do any kind of polling or consensus gathering, we really need to stop down and go back to the basics of what this council stands for, which is community information, community involvement and community feedback, and get out into the CIOs, get out into some of the community business groups, and let them know that this is something that's being discussed and make sure that everybody knows that this is being discussed and get that feedback. And then we can apply that feedback to our own decision-making process when we're looking at what we're doing. I think that's the proper order to take this. And I don't think that, you know, deciding it tonight or a week from tonight or a month from tonight, just ourselves, is the proper way to honor the process. So I would request that we do that first before we go any further with consensus polling tonight.
One thing I've got to change what I said, then. I'm more in favor of the green a thousand-foot buffer than alternative one, because I read the map wrong. So I'll turn, the thousand-foot buffer is what I mentioned last time in city council, where, and that's the green one. That's one I'm more in favor of than alternative one. And to get to Nancy's point, we talked about before, the state voted for this, and residents of Twolton voted, and they voted in favor of it. They wanted marijuana in this area, and they, the state voted that way and so did the city. So second thing about public outreach, though, Nancy, I agree with you, is that if we were to say, okay, if we decide to change the buffers, this would have to go through a public process anyway. We can't just decide and do this. This can go through public hearings. It's going to go through, people are going to have to have their chances to discuss this, come to council, we're going to hear, you know, the pros and cons. This is nothing we're going to slam in. This is just a matter of us directing council to draft a change and then we'll come back as a public hearing, correct? It's just a matter of us directing council to draft a change and then we'll come back as a public hearing, correct?
And it's a plan text amendment, so that would go through the, all the notice periods and that, that, that piece.
Right. So there'd be plenty of time for public, you know, public input.
And I, and I appreciate that. I just think if you've got the cart before the horse analogy, I mean, I think us putting it out and then asking for the feedback is not the same as us asking for the feedback, considering the feedback and then putting something out there. And I'm thinking that, you know, the honorable thing to do and to kind of put our money where our mouth is, is to go out first to the community, get their feedback, use that to make the decision. Then we go into the process, make our, you know, make our suggestion for what the plan text amendment would be. And then we have community input, we have community feedback up front. And then make a decision about what direction to go instead of making a decision about our direction and then having people come in on the back end.
I semi-agree with you. I think part of the problem is if we go out with all these maps, we're just going to confuse people. And rather be focused, go out with one map and so people could be focused and we get that feedback on this or a certain map. Because you can see how we're all like staring at this mansion. We take out this to the community, you're going to get four or five different groups of folks who have different answers on different buffers. But if we say, here's the question, how do you feel about this buffer? Pro, con, pluses, minuses, you know, all that. It's a focused conversation to me on one thing. The thing that we, we're asking the community to get feedback on rather than overflowing with choices. You have one, you say, what do you feel about this? Kind of like we did with the parks, with the splash pads and stuff like that. It was very focused feedback that here are the things that are available. What do you think of these things? Versus giving the, the wide swath of different choices. That's my opinion.
No, and I hear what you're saying, but I certainly don't think that I'm any smarter than any of my neighbors. And I think that if they were to look at four different maps, I mean, they could easily figure out what we're doing. I mean, even when we did do the playgrounds, we had like four schematic pictures and even the kids could choose one of the four that they were in favor of. So I, I don't think that this would be too confusing for anybody in that fashion. But again, if we choose one of these and then we put it out for comment, once again, we've put the choice before community input. And that's the part that I'm not, I'm not super excited about is winnowing this down and then going out and asking the community, oh, by the way, now that we've kind of made a decision and we're making a suggestion, what do you guys think about it? Because, you know, community involvement is terribly important to us. So we really need to make sure we include you now that we've already made our decision.
But we haven't made our decision. Well, we're throwing out to community, asking, what does the community think about this?
About this one that we decided on?
Do you, do you agree with, you know, it would come down to, we get the folks who are adamantly against us changing this in any way. We'll get the folks who are, I'm okay with it. And you'll get the people who are, you know, not committal. But we'll definitely hear back from the community on, either way. And there's no way I'd ever push this down the residents of Toowleton's throats. This has got to be feedback. We might get the feedback back that no way, no way, you know, in heck, we're going to do this. But I want the whole community to be able to just give us feedback versus the, you know, the vocal folks who've been coming to city council. But I do want, there's no way it ever changes without community feedback in the full loop we normally do. Bridgette.
Thanks. I, I, when looking at this, I agree with you, Frank, that thousand-foot buffer is the one that I lean towards. When I looked at the risks, if we did ever do grow facilities and things like that right away, there's different things that come up just with a quick Google search that be near homes and stuff like that. I'm not necessarily sure that that's what I would like to see for, especially if we went that direction. And so the alternative one for me is not something that I feel comfortable with. I do think that, I think that the, the conversation, even when we're having the conversation, it gets complicated. So I don't have a problem with having a conversation. I think that's part of leadership, actually, is to get through some of the nitty-gritty things and some of the issues that come up and pare them down. And so, you know, I, I trust our council to try to make decisions. And we've been listening a lot and we're going to keep listening. And a lot of the listening for me makes me really hold on to the 1,000-foot buffers. And I, I would not vote for the alternative one. Thanks.
Robert.
This is going to live to fight another day. But my only concern about the thousand-foot buffer is the area in the far northwest part of town, those general commercial areas that are starving for investment and development. The only thing that's next to those is Pony Ridge and out there. And there is a clear delineation between the neighborhood and the commercial pieces of that. So I don't see that as being threatening in any way, shape or form. Now, do we want to carve up that area and give it special treatment? Again, that can be for another day. I just wanted to put that out there. I have no problem with the thousand-foot buffer in the McEwen area. I'm just concerned about that one area town.
That makes sense. All right. We're going around and around here. So what's the temperature of the council here? What would you like to do? Do we got to direct the staff to draft changes to the, spacing on it, the, the buffer, I know the buffer, but the T, the plan amendment? The PTA, that's it. Looking at the green 1,000 buffer, I mean, I know Bridgette said she's fine with it. I'm fine with the thousand, not alternative one. I got Valerie and Robert. So I got four. Maria? I got five. So five of us are on board directing staff to draft the changes for the thousand-foot buffer, not alternative one, and start that process? And of course, with the public involvement that we want.
I, I think that's maybe the threshold question that I would want to back up and ask is what level of public involvement is the council comfortable with? Because, I mean, the plan text amendment has its own set of public involvement that's codified. But I think I'm hearing from some members of the council that this is maybe a weightier issue and that there's a need for something like an open house or some kind of, you know, presentations before CIOs, which of course is expanded and is a greater level of staff involvement. So I guess that'd be my question.
Sure.
What was, what was done when the 3,000, I mean, I don't recall and I was out in the community. What was, so whatever we did when we did the 3,000 buzzer, buffer, that's, wouldn't it be that apples-to-apples stuff, whatever we did back then?
We didn't do that because, but we were under time constraints by the state. And we, yeah. I mean, it was a negotiation at the council level. But, but might I suggest that we could come back on an agenda? We don't have to, or I'm looking at staff, like, do we have to jump right to a PTA? Could we come back with maybe a more defined discussion about this map? And kind of some policy questions of what might need to happen? And then explore, do we do an open house? Do we do some kind of public outreach or?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely want the public outreach and meeting. I mean, the stuff where we, we know we do well, you know, getting the community's input.
So maybe a draft, some kind of drafty draft of a PTA that would explore the kind of policy issues.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're getting at is like a framing discussion, like to come back and kind of frame. We, we've got direction to go back and look at one piece of the ordinance to change. So what, what does that look like? What are the steps we're going to take to get through there? So, yeah, we, we should internally kind of, or staff-wise at least, kind of, you know, think, think through that and then we can put something together to bring back.
Think through that and then, as Steve was mentioning, you fire up the CIOs. Let them know, they might have special meetings or, or at least do email bursts to get the note, the notification out when we're going to have a public meeting or open house or listening sessions, all that.
Yeah, and typically the way plan text amendment processes work, they're not super speedy. So the, the CIOs have annual meetings in April, which I think is a great time when they're already together.
That's true.
They're not having to bring people together for a separate meeting. But so if we can, that, that's why we'll go back and kind of put our heads together because what we've found works a lot better is when we can plug ourselves into where people are already at rather than trying to get them to carve out, you know, some extra evening that they don't have.
Makes sense.
Right. No, and, and I appreciate that very much because I do think it's extremely important. And the idea of quadrupling the area that this would be allowed from what we currently have without so much as an open house is just, is just important to me. And I think that it's very antithetical to the community outreach and the community involvement that we've done in the past. So, yeah, at a minimum, an open house to discuss this and visits with the CIO. I think that would be like the barest minimum of what we should be talking about.
Well, why don't I suggest, before you get to what the, the outreach might look like, that we bring back what, what it would take to do a plan text amendment, some, what would need to change? And then maybe some opportunities for public outreach that you guys can bless. Maybe we come back in another work session as opposed to putting it on an actual agenda with kind of a process map and some options for public outreach and what would need to change in the ordinance and in the, the development code. Because we might end up with some additional questions. It's going to include its own change. It will include some, maybe some different standards. I don't know for sure, so.
Yeah, think about it.
That is greatly appreciated.
I think, I like what, you know, she's dead on about the annual meetings for five out of the six are coming up in April. So as long as we can get that out, we might not have this all figured out, but at least get the citizen input fired up by then. That'd be terrific.
Great.
Anything else? All right. You want your maps back? At least recycle them.
We should probably keep them.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, shoot, I should have written them.
It's okay. We didn't write anything nasty. We didn't write anything nasty, right?
We did write a little bit on them, too bad. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks for those. That made it a lot easier in discussion.
All right. At this point, we only have about a couple of minutes left. So we'll do like we normally do, seems like regularly now, is our council communications. We'll have the end of our council meeting. But let me look at, so tonight we have the, the Boy Scouts here. Sorry about that, guys and women. But we have the Boy Scouts here, so.
They're just scouts.
Oh, scouts, I'm sorry. I'm old school, remember? The scouts. So I think a few are going to hang back and do the pledge tonight. So the scouts do the pledge. We have no proclamations or any questions on the consent agenda?
I have a question. I pull the, I will be requesting the, on the consent agenda, the new liquor license be pulled.
All right, all right. So now let's adjourn for a whopping two, three minutes. And we'll come back at seven o'clock and start our regular council meeting. And thanks, Scouts, for coming.